Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, roll.
Alderman Tobin?
Here.
Alderman Jean-François?
Here.
Alderman Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Ram Cassoun?
Here.
Alderman Kleiner?
Here.
Alderman Green? Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
Formerest present.
Pro rule minutes?
June 21st and July 5th, 2022.
So moved.
Massey, seconded by Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
We have an Agon Market report for the municipal shelter inspection from July 8th, 2022.
Received and filed. Okay, for the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward. You want to speak? You want to speak in front of council? Anyone who would like to address the council, you can step forward.
Good evening, folks. I don't know, my name is Tawana Gill.
Just go closer to the mic.
My name is Tawana Gill. I reside at 18 Gavin Avenue. We purchased the property in 2007, my husband and I, and two months ago, a surveyor came and was surveying the property. It said that someone is purchasing the lot next to us, which will be 16 Gavin. When we purchased the property, we was advised from the lawyer and the mortgage person, our lawyer, everybody said nobody would buy next to us. So when my husband said they wanted to put like a stake into the driveway, so 10 feet of Bible property is going to the new owner's lot, of which we didn't know. So we have a boat and a shed, and so they was like, well, we could probably share the driveway. So I requested a foil, and they said, well, no permits have been addressed or anything. So we don't know what's going on as to what to do. And then our neighbor said, why wasn't we given the opportunity to even say yay or nay if we want to purchase the property? And there was no sign that says lot for sale or it was a, when I called the town, they said it was a estate sale. We didn't know anything about it. So we don't know how to proceed forward. And then when the, I guess the builder came, they wasn't approachable. You know, we was asking like, what's going on, rightfully so, but oh, you will know in three to four months because that's where we're going to start building. And that's all we know.
Okay, estate sale is not the city's property. That's a private sale of the property.
Okay.
We can have Mr. Twill behind you, he's the commissioner of DPW.
Okay.
We can check it out and see if they're in compliant, if they have the permits and everything else.
Okay, yeah. Another question, how do we know about these meetings? Because I've been here since 20, um, 2007.
Our council meetings?
And both, my husband, we both retired, and I never knew of anything.
Yeah, we post them on the website, we post them on Facebook, we post them on everything else.
We don't, we don't have no, we never had no desire to go, we mind our business.
And you can always call our office, the city clerk's office, yep.
I did, we did call, I did call the office and then that's why I'm on here, because we was getting like the runaround as to what was going on, but I will sit and see what this meeting's about.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Just to remind you, we rarely do Monday, she might be confused because she's.
Yeah, we usually do meetings on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, Tuesdays?
Yep.
Every Tuesday or?
Nope, first Tuesday and.
First and third Tuesdays.
Anyone else would like to address the council? All right, anyone online? No. Reports of mayor?
Yeah, I just looked up the property online, 16 Gavin's a vacant lot, but it's privately held, so we wouldn't be able to give notice on a private sale. But it's a 50 by 100 lot, so it's probably a buildable lot because it's a pre-existing, meets the neighborhood conditions, but Jacob, you can check for any city utility that would be underneath it possibly. But we, the city didn't sell the lot, it was a private sale, it looks like. But the, just for information, if the city owns a property and we sell it, we contact the owner on each side before we sell it, as a matter of courtesy, to see if they would be interested in the property. But in this case, we don't own it, it's owned by an LLC somewhere. But we'll further look into the matter for you. Tomorrow night is Night Out Against Crime, and that's why we're here on a Monday instead of a Tuesday, it's National Night Out, and at 6 to 8 at Thrall Park. And we hope the majority of the council members, if not all, will be able to attend. Be at Thrall Park, and there'll be a lot of festivities for young people in the community, so we hope you'll come out. Also, you have a resolution tonight to authorizing the demolition of three city-owned properties. One is 99 East Avenue, one's 404 North, and the other is 2628 Mill Street Rear. And what we do with, we take back city-owned property on tax, or take back property on tax sale, since we initiated the homebuyer program, we are, I believe, on our 15th home of renovating. So community development does an evaluation of whether the home can be renovated with a, for a reasonable amount of money, and then we put it into our homebuyer program. These three properties have been deemed not rehabbable for the purposes of selling them because the cost to rehab them would exceed, far exceed, the market value for selling the home, even with the grant money, it would be unaffordable. So the three houses have been designated for demolition with your authorization. We will look at 99 East, probably proposal would be to maintain it as parking for, there is some activity in that area with a playground, city-owned playground at Beatty Hill, and also the church next door. 40, or 26-28 Mills Rear, it's a pretty large-sized piece of property, and narrow on Mill Street, but opens up going towards the rail trail. So we would probably maintain that property as, since it's contiguous to the rail trail and make it part of our rail trail system. And the last one was, what did I say, 99 East, 404 North is also very bad shape, but not a buildable lot. So those three properties will be, will make other uses for the 404 North, I'm not sure exactly what we'll do with it at this point, but the property needs to be demoed. We are looking citywide at other properties that may have to be demoed, that don't meet the qualifications of a CDA rehab, and we'll keep you abreast as we move forward on that. Some of the homes that were identified by Mary Ann and her memo this week, Mary Ann's our city assessor, are, we believe, rehabilitable, like, there's a couple on, throughout the city that we believe are, we can rehab them and sell them, part of our program. And some of them are vacant lots, and we're going to have to make a decision on some of the vacant lots that we have, on whether we want to put them into a program rather than rehabbing possibility of the city through our community development agency, putting a modular on there and getting some homeownership into certain neighborhoods. So, but we'll keep you abreast as we move forward on the information that comes back. Another option, of course, is to sell them, and we prefer the first option because then we have a home ownership requirement for 10 years, rather than selling a home, having it being constructed and possibly a rental for the next, forever. So as we move forward on that, we'll keep you up to date. I believe there was a question on the eight and a half million dollar bond, that's resolution that's being requested tonight, and that is, we're not committing to the project, this is, this is a bond resolution that allows us to submit the grant. And the, you will have to come back, we will have to come back to you if we're successful on the grant application and qualify for additional funding if we so choose. The grant is for 60%. We'll have to weigh the pluses and minuses at that time, we'll do an evaluation of impact on rate, but Jacob will be presenting to you the details, maybe tonight and maybe in the future, of the, what he's requesting, but there's, this is not a commitment to do, to spend eight and a half million dollars. We will have to come back when we have the feedback on the success of the grant. And I believe that's all I have. Anyone have any questions?
Any question for mayor, Alderman Jean-François?
Mayor, is there any information coming from the county files, the monkeypox that's going around, that you know of?
Nothing directly to us, other than, I know a big focus has been New York City with the vaccine, but nothing that we've been in contact with, with the Orange County Health Commissioner. That might be a result of, there's a change now, the Health Commissioner from Orange County is leaving and going down to Nassau County, so I can certainly reach out to the county exec's office and see if there's any plans for doing any type of vaccination here. I know there is an outreach on polio, because there was a case in polio, and I think the county is doing some polio vaccine sites, but not, nothing I've heard on monkeypox.
Thank you, mayor. All right. Anyone else?
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, remarks of the department head, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we had a CDA meeting. We're on our way to finishing the two homes, one on Wisner and one on Linden, and the sale of Tao Cow Place is, should be shortly. We're just waiting for the bank to finalize everything. Also, we're evaluating six more properties to go into our inventory for the CDA as well. Also working, we submitted two CFA grants last week and our action plan through our community development agency, and also we're looking at our Thursday, Friday night concerts moving forward. We have a couple Saturday afternoon youth concerts coming up at Run for Downtown Park on August 6th and 13th, from 2 to 4. Our farmer's market is going strong, Run for Downtown, August 20th, Jefferson Starship, August 19th, a new show announcement at the Paramount, The Floyd Experience, a Pink Floyd tribute for October, and then we're getting another new release, Bullet Train, coming this Friday, it's starring Brad Pitt, Sandra Bullock, and things are just moving ahead, and that's all I have for tonight.
Any question, Maria? Maria, the house on Wisner, I saw a stone like in the backyard, are we leaving it like blacktop in the back, or is it going to be grass, the backyard?
In the backyard? I'll double-check for you.
Yeah, I saw a lot of stone dumped.
Well, they, they had to excavate and do the foundation, we had issues with the, so that could be left over from that, but I'll double-check, make sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
DPW commissioner?
Good evening. I will start with Alderman Massey. The reservoirs, as you know, we haven't had any rain lately, and really July has been one of the driest months in recent history, only one and a quarter inches of rain in the 30 days of July, or, so the reservoirs are 89% now, which we are still in good shape, but hopefully our fortune will change in August, and we will have more rain. Talking about rain and safe yield, I've been reporting, the mayor and I have been reporting to you about the safe yield issues that we've been having with the DEC and extending water services to the Forensics Psychiatric Center that's being, will be constructed by the state. It's about $300 million project in Goshen, right next to the existing psychiatric center on 17M, and they wanted to take water and sewer from us. So after many, several meetings and letters and so on and so forth, between the mayor, myself, and DEC and our consultants, the DEC, they saw it our way, and they agreed to approve it, to approve the water and sewer extension to the new facility. And with that, we're very excited about it. So that's a, that's a great, great plus for us, for the city of Middletown, and will open huge opportunities for us in the future. That will tie into, we have several resolutions before you tonight. I will just tie this discussion with the second resolution of approving $30,000 for installing flow meters and stream gauges at our reservoirs and at our dams. And that is part of the DEC permit that they have given us for the safe yield. They want to monitor exactly how much water we're taking from each reservoir and how much water is leaving the reservoir, certain reservoirs such as Indigo and Mill Pond, when we are withdrawing water from it. So with that, we would need $30,000, and there DPW will be installing those flow meters and stream gauges. So this will be part, this is the second resolution that you have before you for tonight, and that's why we need it, it's part of the DEC requirement for us to approve the safe yield that they approved. So we started paving this today, the streets have been milled and prepared over the past month, and so now the paving has started in the first ward, and they have accomplished quite a bit this today. So again, I urge the public with our sincere apology, just to bear with us, and it's going to be inconvenient, we have a lot of projects opened up throughout the city, installing major water mains from the filter plant down to Monhegan Avenue, having the traffic operations, upgrading our curbs, sidewalks, traffic lights, pedestrian crossing. It's a huge amount of work that's being done, and I know it's inconvenient for some people, so please either find alternate routes or just bear with us, and we'll try to accommodate everybody as much as possible, but it's a great progress our city is doing with all this funding and the projects that are taking place. So another, another resolution before you tonight is for CDM Smith approving another $25,000, and that's because the city is putting quite a bit of effort in reviewing the Dulson Town Road corridor and all the development. So this money, the additional money is required by our consultant in order to continue with the review. As you know, we submitted, the mayor reported to you, we submitted quite a bit of list of things we were concerned about. Now, the town engineer or the town itself will come back to us with their responses, and we have to evaluate the responses and possibly write back, but that's how the process works with the SECR. So that's where we are with that project, and that's why we need that first resolution approved, if you can. Eight and a half million dollar project, the bond, that's before you for tonight, the mayor, he explained it very well. This is for replacing the raw water line from Kench, partially replacing it, it doesn't finish the whole thing. The entire project from Kench Reservoir to Shawangang Reservoir is $18 million, that's the estimate for it. We're asking for eight and a half million dollars, because this way we can, we can get the maximum grant possible under this program, which is $5 billion. So our plan is to install, replace the old pipe that's existing between Kench and Shawangang. By the way, this is like our lifeline, to get the water from Kench over to Shawangang, that's where we get most of our water into the city of Middletown reservoirs. And so with that being said, it's going to be a very important project for us, we've been applying for grants year after year after year, and we have not been successful. We did apply for the same project under, another grant by the federal government for the full $18 million. So we'll see, hopefully one of them will come in, and this will include enlarging the water main that will bring water from Kench Reservoir to Shawangang Reservoir, and then that will increase our yield as well, our safe water, safe yield. So with that being said, I will stop right here, if you have any questions for me?
How are we doing with the rodeo on Monhegan Avenue?
The rodeo, I reported on that, that's the water line you're referring to?
No, the roads, how bad they are?
Yes, I know, that's a surface restoration.
From us here all the way down to the psych center.
Yeah, that's a surface restoration for the 24-inch high-pressure water main that we replaced. The contractor right now is switching over the one-inch, the water services to the adjacent properties. And when was it, last week, we just made the connection for Rousser Drive?
Last Wednesday.
I'm sorry?
Last Wednesday.
Yeah, last Wednesday, thank you, Alderman Johnson. So the process, the project is moving along, and there's a progress in there, I know I said two weeks ago, I'm sorry?
Month ago, two weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a function of the progress in there, when you pin me down to give me a date, rather than, I say in a couple of weeks. So we're pushing ahead as much as, as fast as we can get the contractor to go along with us. Then after that, the road will be milled again, and it will be paved. The state of New York, because mostly, some, good part of it is in the state of New York, in 211, they are as anxious as anybody to get it done. I apologize for the condition of the road, but that's, that's where we are. So when is it going to be done? As soon as, as soon as possible.
So how long is it going to take to change the water lines?
The services? They're working on it actively every day, saying a couple of weeks, it took longer.
Okay, all right. Any question for Jacob, Alderman Johnson?
I have an easier question. We went from 93 to 89 on the reservoirs, what's a, what's a time that we would be concerned for the capacity?
We're still, it depends, it depends on, you know, how much precipitation we have, that's a good question. We usually, we start panicking, not panicking, I mean, we start getting concerned about 70%.
Oh, okay.
And so on, but we keep watching it, we keep watching the weather and so on and so forth, there is no really.
So 89 is still pretty good?
I'm sorry, yes.
89 is still pretty good, thank you.
We're still in good, in good hands, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
City assessor?
Good evening, everyone. I have nothing to report this evening. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any question for our assessor? Nope, thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Any question for the city clerk? All right. Public hearings and grievances?
We have a. Yes. I believe it opens the 20th, I'll find out, it's, it's opening soon.
Okay, public hearings and grievances?
We have a public hearing for local law number five of 2022. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 1st, 2022, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible, common council chambers, second floor, 16 James Street at 7:30 PM, to hear all, any and all persons wishing to be heard on the recently passed local law number five of 2022 regarding creating the position of the deputy treasurer. Full text of the local law is available in the office of the common council clerk, city hall, 16 James Street, room 12, and on the city website.
At this time, the public hearing is now open. Anyone from the public? Any council member have any questions, concerns, comments? All right, motion to close?
So moved.
Alderman Massey, seconded by?
Second.
Alderman Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. All right, remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you, just two things. The first is that we're going to have our first ward meeting next Wednesday night, the 10th, at 6 o'clock here in the, in the council chambers. And the second thing is tomorrow, local business owner Freddie Williams of the Six West Barber Shop is being recognized by the county executive for being the Orange County Citizen of the Month. So that's kind of a good thing. Freddie is the, a three-year Middletown School Board member and recently was elected vice president. He also does a tremendous job contributing to youth sports and volunteers a whole lot of his time. So if you see him, congratulate him. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. We will have our second ward constituents meeting next Monday, the 8th, right here at 7 o'clock in council chambers. I wanted to mention, and we're going to put this up on the website, but Senator Scoofus has written really an excellent letter in, in response to the, where we on to draft environmental impact statement, objecting to the project, so we are, we are going to have that at some point soon, hopefully on the website, and I thank the senator for that. I don't know that the Middletown post office has this yet, but this is the new Pete Seeger stamp, and it came out on July 21st, easy to remember, my mom's birthday. But that's it, the Middletown post office has not had it, but I was able to go to the Scottstown post office and get it, somehow they always get the stamps in first, but it's a really nice tribute to, I think, a very important Mid-Hudson resident, so. And other than that, I hope to see everyone tomorrow at Night Out Against Crime. Thank you.
Alderman Cassoun?
Good evening. I just, we, the third ward had our monthly meeting last Tuesday, and for you, Ms. Gill, it's another way for you to kind of connect, it's right down the street from your house, we've been having it in the warm weather at Maple Hill Park in a pavilion, and we bring snacks, we had a nice meeting, this month we had a special guest star, the chair of the DPW committee came, and we had a good time, it's a good opportunity to talk about things that you have questions about and for us to keep you informed of what's going on. Other than that, I'm just really excited about paving having started. So they always do a fantastic job, so I anticipate all our beautiful, smooth streets pretty shortly, that's all I have tonight.
Alderman Johnson?
I agree with her, you should come and have cheesecake, it's a good deal. So I know that Alderman Kleiner usually is the reminder of important dates in history, but I thought I would put a toe in the water this evening and remind you of another date. So I went to the post office, he knows where I'm going, I went to the post office this morning, and I was wearing this tie, and the lady behind the counter said, oh, doc, you have a nice tie. I said, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and she said, is it a Jerry Garcia tie? I said, well, actually, it is a Jerry Garcia tie. And she said, well, do you know what today is? I said, no. Today is the 80th anniversary of Jerry Garcia's birthday, he was born August 1st of 1942. So I did a quick Google consult, I know this is important, this is why I want to report on it, I did a quick Google consult, born in 42, died in 95, started the ties in 92, there are 95 in the collection, I have about 15, so I have a way to go, but it's good to have goals. So here's to Jerry Garcia, happy birthday, rest in peace, and thanks for the ties. That's all I have this evening, thank you.
All right, Alderman Jean-François?
Yes, good evening. The fourth meeting is this Saturday at 10 o'clock in this chamber, so anyone from the fourth ward is welcome to join us, Sprow and I. And also, I'd like to thank the street department, it's been a very hot summer, these guys are out there doing their best for our city, so I'd like to thank them very much. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
Good evening, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing a contract amendment with CDM Smith and a budget transfer.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Witt, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing a budget transfer for $30,000 to purchase flow meters and gauges.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing an eight and a half million dollar bond for raw water line replacements at the reservoir.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing a proposal from Clark Patterson Lee for setting concrete monuments at Mountain Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Cassoun, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoun authorizing a proposal from Clark Patterson Lee for surveyed easement at High Barney, High Barney Water Storage Tanks.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoun, seconded by Alderman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson accepting a $615 donation from the American Lung Association, Power Against Tobacco, for Finding Nemo movie night. Association, Power Against Tobacco, for Finding Nemo movie night.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois accepting a $1,500 donation from local businesses to support the National Night Out Against Crime.
Resolution sponsored by Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Tobin, any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
Yes, thank you. I just would like to give the recognition to the people who are actually doing the donating. And it's the Amber Sub Shop, $250, the Middletown Firefighters Professional Association, $250, and the Middletown Housing Authority, $1,000. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution amended, sponsored by Alderman Tobin amending resolution 98-22 to deposit donated funds into the police donation revenue line.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Again, I think when we passed this back in last May, we also didn't mention the people, so I wanna give them our thanks and the public recognition. The Heritage Financial Credit Union, $250, Kiwanis Club of Middletown, $250, Appleby McPhillips Funeral Home, $250, Middletown Professional Car Wash, $300, and Nycomco, $200. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing an agreement with CPI HR to assist with the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act implementation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt accepting a $1,000 donation from the Animal Health Center to support youth programs and events.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.